Good evening, today is Monday, June 5th, 2017. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. And I ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, that's it, you call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Saludo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Conquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Boyter, absent. Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We are in session. I'd ask Kathy Seegert and, where'd you go? Brian Burkheger to meet me over here. Okay, we're here, the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation runs a Ruth Strand poster contest that we do every year. Ruth Strand was a children's librarian at Elmhurst for, I know it's over 25 years, I don't know the exact amount, but when she passed, she left an endowment to the Historical Museum, I'm sorry, History Museum. She was also integral, was an integral part in forming the History Museum. And in remembrance of her, we hold this contest every year, and we ask the youth of Elmhurst, the schools, to draw something historic, but then we also ask them to follow it up with a little bit of a short essay every year. And we're here to celebrate those entrants tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Brian first, and he's going to give you a few more details.
Well, I'm so happy to be here tonight to help celebrate the winners of the Ruth Strand poster contest and to celebrate Elmhurst history. I also thank Mayor Morley for his consideration to add this to the meeting this evening. The poster contest is conducted by Elmhurst Heritage Foundation as a way to encourage participation in the museum's school services, which meet social studies curriculum standards here in Elmhurst, and take place in classrooms, in the museum galleries, as well as at Churchville One Room Schoolhouse. Foundation funds also pay transportation costs for all Elmhurst school classes coming to the museum and the schoolhouse. Now, the museum takes very seriously its mission as an educational institution, and we're most pleased to always work closely with school administrators and teachers to help our kids here in Elmhurst connect in positive ways with the community at large, and especially to make these connections through local history. I congratulate each of our winners on their achievement here tonight. And with that, I'd like to introduce the members of the Board of Directors of Elmhurst Heritage Foundation who are here this evening. Would you all please stand? Thank you. And I'll turn things over to Kathy Seegert. Kathy is a board member of Elmhurst Heritage Foundation and is the chairperson of the 2017 poster contest.
This is another celebration. The students had about a month to do their poster, and you saw some when you came in, the winners, and it was only second graders that participate, because that's where they study some of the Elmhurst history. So, we judged, we had a lot of people come and fill out ballots, we tallied it, we figured out who was first, second, and third place. This year, we had a tie for second. It happens once in a while. And then each school that participates has a student that is selected for honorable mention. So, we use the tallies from the votes, and we select. This year, we had ten schools in Elmhurst, second grade classes participate, or just If a school has ten students that participate, they get a $100 gift to be used in their library, and that's from the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. It's just another way we're trying to support education, history education. So, we had a reception for the kids, there was a lot of clapping then, and then the winners from first all the way through honorable mention are invited to participate in the Memorial Day Parade, and they sit on benches in the back of one of the city pickup trucks, and they have a wonderful time, especially when we have weather like we did last week. And then, they're honored here tonight. We had fourteen winners, and I want to call out the names of those that are here tonight, and have them come up, please. So, Elizabeth Baranacanchana. Elizabeth is from Jackson School. And she had an honorable mention. Rachel Reeve. Rachel is from Field School. Zishwan Mugal. Zishwan is from Emerson School. Zishwan also participated on Memorial Day. And we have Lucy Killick. Oh, I missed one of you, I'm sorry. Lucy is one of our second-place winners. And Lily McDonough. Lily has an honorable mention. Lucy was from Edison, and Lily goes to Visitation School. So, congratulations to you.
All right, everyone is recognized, I want you guys to come up here with me. Line up right here. Alphabetic, light height. I always start to think for the center. All right, switch it a little better. Smile for everybody.
Pictures were on that carpet.
Good thing you noticed the wave, too.
All right, don't go anywhere, guys. All right. So, I know all of you here want to say congratulations to schools, so we start here with all of them, all of them, and shake your hands and go all the way around. Third, you, little one, go ahead.
Congratulations.
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 Did you have fun doing it?
Congratulations.
Did you learn a lot?
Congratulations.
Good. Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Congratulations.
Be careful of step, okay?
Yeah, be careful of step.
Watch your step, sweetie.
Watch your step.
Here you go, you're gonna get that.
Watch that step.
Careful on your step.
Congratulations.
Watch that step.
Congratulations.
Careful with your step.
Congratulations.
We take good time.
Okay, now, on to the floor. And then, they're like, oh, it's not there. What happened?
Did she join it?
Did she join?
Oh, you were saying. I missed the, how did she pronounce it? I missed the name for it.
Okay, on to Agenda Item 4. Received written communications from the public at this time. Is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications they wish to submit? Please raise your hand if you have any written communications to submit. They waving to us? Aye. On to Agenda Item 5, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on any issue they so choose. We ask that you actually direct your comments to the Chair. When you're called, we ask that you approach the microphone over there to my right, your left, right next to Chief Ruth. We ask out of respect for the work that we need to get here done, get done here tonight, and also for the respect out of others who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. I will time you, and if you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for Public Forum?
Yes, Mayor. We'll start with Claude Pagash, 566 Northwest Gladys.
Isn't it West Gladys?
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Been a while since council has met. Last meeting was rather interesting. Health Center in Fremont showed up in force. They're both beneficial. That helped Center and the residents that lived there, around there. My wife spent some time, not in that facility, but I understand the need for them. But I doubt seriously if the people that bought homes in that area anticipated expansion. City Council didn't change the federal laws. So, there has to be a change to that institution. Who's going to pay? The residents? Should be an interesting vote. But then I picked up the paper, and I read about Butterfield. Zoning and planning changed the zoning for the area. Residents didn't much care for that complex going in, but sure, as God makes little green apples, it got voted down, got voted up again, and changed the zoning. And then, at the last meeting, we had a rendition of how government works here in Elmhurst. We have council, have committees. Yes, we do. Committees debate things, council votes on them, and the operator and Robert's Rules of Order. Unfortunately, I had too many meetings and seen the rules eliminated because something had to be passed. So, Robert Rules of Order are not the standard at this legislative body. It's a paperweight. That's what it comes down to. Rules get suspended, debate takes place, and it gets passed. Ain't going to get passed in the Robert's Rules of Order, it is going to pass. And all these people, whether on Butterfield or at Health Center, they really read the rules you pass, they really do. They go on the computers, and they show that. And what happens when they read them? They come to this council, or they go to zoning and planning, or development and planning, and they find out that ain't worth the paper they're written on. I fought the six-story parking garage. It got voted down, city shows up with the owner, and what happens at zoning and planning?
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
The only thing I got out of that six-story garage is more bonds to pay.
That concludes who signed up for Public Forum, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes everyone who signed up for Public Forum. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet but wishes to address council at this time? If so, please raise your hand and identify yourself. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Gatesman, you're up.
Julie Gatesman, I just wanted to say that I thoroughly enjoyed, sorry, I thoroughly enjoyed Dance on the Deck on Saturday night. There were a ton of people out there, and it was really awesome to see little kids, teenagers, and adults all dancing out there and having a great time. The college jazz band was awesome, and I really hope we get to do that again next year.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of announcements tonight. The first one is that on June 17th, which is two weeks ago from this past Saturday night, Elmhurst College will be hosting once again the annual June Jazz Program, and it takes place on the quad of Elmhurst College. Bring a picnic lunch and beverages with you. Enjoy the evening. Doc Severson will be the featured performer again this year. He'll be accompanied by the Elmhurst College Jazz Band that was just mentioned, awesome performers, and then they're off to Spain, I believe, right after that. But it's a great evening of entertainment, get a chance to see your neighbors, and enjoy, you know, wonderful music in a wonderful setting. So, encourage everybody to show up for that. And then, if I may, do another one, too. This is the first announcement for the Elmhurst Cycling Classic. It's going to be July 21st. It's Friday. We begin racing at 11:00 a.m. in the morning and race until 10:00 p.m. at night. Information can be found at elmbike.com. I'm calling out for volunteers. We need about 150 volunteers to help us run the events of the day, and you can volunteer online at elmbike.com. Volunteer shifts are three to four hours each. You're compensated with some beverages and food, and all kinds of t-shirts and stuff like that, so it's fun. It makes the race possible, quite honestly. So, we hope to see some people sign up for volunteers, and we certainly hope to see everybody out there enjoying the evening. We're adding one more exciting element to the races this year. We're going to do a hand cycling race between the professional men's and women's races, so this will give people with disabilities a chance to show off their cycling skills as well and compete in a 30-minute race. So, we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? On to Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any aldermen wishes to have removed to vote no or provide further comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion by Alderman Bram, second by Alderman Dunn. Clerk Spencer.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Saludo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Boyter, absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. On to committee reports. Agenda Item 8, 8.1. Clerk Spencer, we have a report out of Finance that asks that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee to not renew the electric aggregation program at this time, and for staff to prepare a communications plan regarding the non-renewal, the switchback to ComEd and to provide resources for residents and small businesses on alternative options for the supply of electricity. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman Mark Sabatino, Vice Chairman Tina Park, and Mike Brennan.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The report gives a pretty good historical perspective of the electric aggregation program since its inception, and also explains the reasons why the committee made a decision not to renew the program at this point in time. Electricity is a commodity, and as we all know, rates go up and down, mostly up, but they do go down periodically as well. And the scale, the ability to really use an aggregation program to save the consumers' money in bulk really just isn't there any longer like it was previously. I think it's, a couple of things are important. There will be information being sent out to anybody who has not opted out of the program. Many residents have opted out of the program already per this committee's recommendation several months ago, but those who didn't will be getting information from, I believe, the ComEd, is that correct? Yeah, ComEd will be getting, sending information out, and they will just automatically be switched back into the ComEd rate program. And the other thing I wanted to just also bring up is that there is plenty of information available on the city website. All you need to do is search for electric aggregation. You'll get everything that you need to know there. And one of the benefits of our aggregation program was that we had a higher percentage of renewable energy within our aggregation program. We were at 50 percent. The utility of ComEd is 13 percent ballpark renewable energy, but if you go into, go to the website pluginillinois.org, you'll be able to find as an individual consumer of electricity sources for electricity supplies that have higher levels of renewable energy, and that would be the best place to go. If you're like me, many of you have been getting telephone calls, trying to get you to switch here or there or whatever. Really, your best source is to go to the pluginillinois.org and make your decisions on your electricity supplier there. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Thank you.
Good. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Saludo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Boyter, absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. On to committee reports. Agenda Item 8, 8.1. Clerk Spencer, we have a report out of Finance that asks that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee to not renew the electric aggregation program at this time, and for staff to prepare a communications plan regarding the non-renewal, the switchback to ComEd and to provide resources for residents and small businesses on alternative options for the supply of electricity. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman Mark Sabatino, Vice Chairman Tina Park, and Mike Brennan.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The report gives a pretty good historical perspective of the electric aggregation program since its inception, and also explains the reasons why the committee made a decision not to renew the program at this point in time. Electricity is a commodity, and as we all know, rates go up and down, mostly up, but they do go down periodically as well. And the scale, the ability to really use an aggregation program to save the consumers' money in bulk really just isn't there any longer like it was previously. I think it's, a couple of things are important. There will be information being sent out to anybody who has not opted out of the program. Many residents have opted out of the program already per this committee's recommendation several months ago, but those who didn't will be getting information from, I believe, the ComEd, is that correct? Yeah, ComEd will be getting, sending information out, and they will just automatically be switched back into the ComEd rate program. And the other thing I wanted to just also bring up is that there is plenty of information available on the city website. All you need to do is search for electric aggregation. You'll get everything that you need to know there. And one of the benefits of our aggregation program was that we had a higher percentage of renewable energy within our aggregation program. We were at 50 percent. The utility of ComEd is 13 percent ballpark renewable energy, but if you go into, go to the website pluginillinois.org, you'll be able to find as an individual consumer of electricity sources for electricity supplies that have higher levels of renewable energy, and that would be the best place to go. If you're like me, many of you have been getting telephone calls, trying to get you to switch here or there or whatever. Really, your best source is to go to the pluginillinois.org and make your decisions on your electricity supplier there. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Thank you.
Good. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Saludo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Boyter, absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. On to committee reports. Agenda Item 8, 8.1. Clerk Spencer, we have a report out of Finance that asks that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee to not renew the electric aggregation program at this time, and for staff to prepare a communications plan regarding the non-renewal, the switchback to ComEd and to provide resources for residents and small businesses on alternative options for the supply of electricity. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman Mark Sabatino, Vice Chairman Tina Park, and Mike Brennan.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The report gives a pretty good historical perspective of the electric aggregation program since its inception, and also explains the reasons why the committee made a decision not to renew the program at this point in time. Electricity is a commodity, and as we all know, rates go up and down, mostly up, but they do go down periodically as well. And the scale, the ability to really use an aggregation program to save the consumers' money in bulk really just isn't there any longer like it was previously. I think it's, a couple of things are important. There will be information being sent out to anybody who has not opted out of the program. Many residents have opted out of the program already per this committee's recommendation several months ago, but those who didn't will be getting information from, I believe, the ComEd, is that correct? Yeah, ComEd will be getting, sending information out, and they will just automatically be switched back into the ComEd rate program. And the other thing I wanted to just also bring up is that there is plenty of information available on the city website. All you need to do is search for electric aggregation. You'll get everything that you need to know there. And one of the benefits of our aggregation program was that we had a higher percentage of renewable energy within our aggregation program. We were at 50 percent. The utility of ComEd is 13 percent ballpark renewable energy, but if you go into, go to the website pluginillinois.org, you'll be able to find as an individual consumer of electricity sources for electricity supplies that have higher levels of renewable energy, and that would be the best place to go. If you're like me, many of you have been getting telephone calls, trying to get you to switch here or there or whatever. Really, your best source is to go to the pluginillinois.org and make your decisions on your electricity supplier there. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Thank you.
Good. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Saludo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Boyter, absent. Thirteen present, zero na, pardon me, thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 8.1 is approved. On to reports and recommendations. 9.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of things to report. First is last Monday, the 29th, was our Memorial Day Parade. I think it was bigger than last couple of years, 91 entrants, certainly the best weather we've had in about the last three or four years. I want to thank everybody who participated, all the city workers, everybody who helped make it a great event. I certainly want to recognize Ralph Pachanio. He's head of our Veterans Commission. John Quigley, he runs the chamber. He and Ralph really are the ones who set up the parade. And then afterwards, I would encourage you, I'm sure it's going to be online at some point, but Elmhurst holds a memorial ceremony at our memorial, what do we call it? Memorial Park right outside the old library, right next to the mansion, and I think it says, "We'll Never Forget" is the, is what's in stone there. But if you've never attended one of these, you really should. It's quite moving. Bill Shanklin has run it the last couple of years. He does a fantastic job, and we recognize all branches of the service, and we get nothing but compliments before and afterwards. A whole bunch of great veterans showed up, show up. We have them all the way from World War II on up. My buddy Edwin, Major Edwin Walker, Marine Edwin Walker, showed up and gave a speech. He's a terrific guy. I think he's 91 years old. You've got to meet him. Anyway, our Memorial Day Parade is really top-notch, and we top it off with a great ceremony. I encourage you, if you did not have the opportunity to attend, to watch it online. Ms. Gatesman mentioned the concert on the deck, or dancing on the deck, where the Elmhurst College Jazz Band played this Saturday. I think it was from 6:00 to 9:00. Does that sound right? Maybe a little bit over, but we, that was okay. They were having a good time. And that did a couple of things. First of all, it highlighted the relatively new parking deck, and if you've never been up there, you can go up there. It's quite a point of view you've never seen from Elmhurst. But the other thing, too, was, this is one of the things that came out of the Elmhurst Town and Gown Commission that we formed with the, with Elmhurst College about a year and a half ago. Peter Griffin really was the driving force behind this specific event, and like all first-time events, you're really not sure how it's going to take off or how it's going to be received, and reports are that we were at maximum capacity. They were counting, and it was a success, and there's already suggestions of what we can do next year, and certainly, we're going to take those into account. Neighborhood Roll Call is starting up again. For those of you who don't know, that's where our police department will actually, it's our award-winning Neighborhood Roll Call. Our police department actually goes into a specific neighborhood, and they do the shift change in front of the residents. If you haven't had a chance to attend one of those, I encourage you to do so. They start this week, Tuesday, 6 o'clock, at Belden and Willow, and then we'll be doing another one at Crescent and Swain on Thursday. Do we post this, I assume?
Yes, on the police Facebook.
On the police Facebook page. We do it throughout the summer, so when we have an opportunity to report it at council, I will, but check the police Facebook page for the police coming to your neighborhood. And then, the last thing I want to highlight, and you may have saw it coming, seen it coming in here, may have seen it coming in here, we're calling it Rescue One. City Council and Public Affairs and Safety Committee spent really the last six months or so evaluating public safety and kind of our first responders and where we are, and if there's any improvements that we can do. Ultimately, committee recommended and council approved to add what we're calling a rapid response vehicle. This is, I actually think it's a Ford Explorer. It's a utility vehicle that's not necessarily an ambulance, but it has advanced life-saving support on it, and it's much more nimble than an ambulance. So, I'm happy to say that that Rescue One went into service over the weekend, started on Saturday morning. I know we're going to be tracking it. When we get an emergency call, there's this whole complicated chart depending on what type of call it is and what vehicles we send out, whether it's a fire truck and an ambulance, or, you know, the police cruiser and a fire truck or what have you. So, we're still figuring out how this fits in for the best benefit of Elmhurst, but I can tell you this, and we're going to get a report back after the first couple of months, but today alone, I'd like to use today alone as an example of a snapshot of how that rapid response vehicle operated within Elmhurst to the benefit of everybody. So, that rapid response vehicle today, which is really kind of like a mini ambulance, but it doesn't have, it's not big enough to transport anybody. They went on four calls today. Because it's smaller, it actually got to two of the calls before the ambulance could get to the calls. At both of those calls, they were able to assess the situation and call off the ambulance. That means that we're more efficient, but even more importantly, that means that ambulance is available if there is an emergency where someone needs a full ambulance. That's just in one day. Two ambulances were called off. The other thing that this rapid response vehicle does, it's housed at Fire Station 1, which is up north. The other thing that this rapid response vehicle did is twice, when ambulance were day at work, to be able to do all of that. And that wraps it up for me. City Manager?
Thank you. One item at your position tonight, you, I'm sure, noticed, the cups and the Explore Elmhurst swag that was with it. This is our Explore Elmhurst press kit that's being sent out to media and other influencers such as the hotels, the Explore Elmhurst Group, County, and whatnot. It's got mostly information on the trolley. And this weekend was the first weekend for the trolley in the summer routes. And I'm very pleased to report that we had 835 riders this weekend, split between 359 on Friday, 476 on Saturday. And to compare that to last year, we had 390 riders all weekend long. So we're seeing quite an increase in that. And one, one additional item that we've included this year is a trolley tracker. So if you go to the Explore Elmhurst website, and in the upper left-hand corner, there is a link for the map where you can track the trolley to know best where it's at and how you can, how you can time your evening or day.
So, yeah, I forgot to add. So not only do we have the trolley tracker, we did change the hours a little bit. We dropped Sunday altogether, but this was after analyzing all the data from last year. We dropped Sunday, but we start Friday, I think Friday used to start at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. We start Friday at noon. And to Jim's point, last year was 350-some. I think the first year was like 89 riders the first day and maybe 120 the second day. So this is something that is certainly the residents of Elmhurst are taking to mind. Any other reports from Alderman? Alderman Bram first, and I'll go to Alderman Dunn.
Just a couple of things, and, well, okay, a couple of things. First off, I just want to say from the fire department, we all received the annual report on the DIES. This is the first time I had a chance to take a look at it, but it's great. I hope to see this online if it's not already. It's a lot of good information that's in here highlighting everything that the fire department does, and also gives some good data about the call volume breakdown as well. The other item, and the reason why I hesitated, because Alderman Dunn might have been wanting to speak to this, was the return, I guess, of round two of the Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Test, which started yesterday. So if Elmhurst residents are starting to hear more airplanes overhead at nighttime hours, it could be the reason is because round two of the Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Test, I like to lovingly call it the Sheer of the Noise Test, has started up as of yesterday. I encourage all residents to go on the city website. It has all the information on there to fill out the survey, and also you, there's links as well to voice any of your concerns. But definitely take the few minutes to fill out the survey in regards to this program. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on the O'Hare runway rotation situation and speak to some recent happenings with the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, ONCC, and the Ad hoc Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Subcommittee. Attended, City Manager Grabowski and I attended the Ad hoc Fly Quiet Committee meeting on May 19th, where they were looking at alternatives for a Test Three. Right now, we're in Test Two, as Alderman Bram mentioned, and that we're actually in the sixth week of Test Two, so halfway, halfway through it. We have, we have particular interests in Weeks Two, Six, and Ten, because those are the run, the weeks where the runways that are being utilized primarily affect Elmhurst. And this particular week for the Test Two, we're, we're scheduled for takeoffs from 22L, which points at us. And I didn't get any complaints last night. That was the first day of it. But, you know, we'll see how it goes this week. And then we have another week where we're going to experience landings on July 2nd, and then the, the test finishes up the week of July 16th, so mid to late July. So at this, the meeting that City Manager Grabowski and I attended, two different options were entertained for a Test Number Three. The first one being, there was a Test A and a Test B, and there wasn't really a lot of difference as far as Elmhurst concerns. And, and the, the major issue with, with this version of the tests is we're not being affected every fourth week, but every other week, which, which is a, is a big concern, and it, it just feels like that's not an effective use of the, the five runways that they're using over in, at O'Hare. So I voiced my concern at that meeting at the end. The Subcommittee did vote to adopt one of the options. And then we had, then the full ONCC committee meeting was held last Friday, June 1st, and, and that was reviewed and voted on, that particular test for Test Three. So our concern was the lack of rotation and also the very rapid implementation of Test Three. That was developed, the plan for that was developed one or two weeks into Test Two. We felt that was premature to, to, to go ahead with a follow-on test, having not completed Test Two. So I made a motion at the committee, committee meeting to, the commission meeting, to delay the vote on Test Three on behalf of the City of Elmhurst, and delay that till the next ONCC meeting, which would be in September, and it would have afforded the opportunity to review Test Two, which would be completed in July, and have enough information to make a more educated decision on, on the viability of Test Three. Unfortunately, that was struck down, that motion. And then the, the underlying issue to, to, to vote to accept that was, was accepted by a pretty large margin. The ONCC is really stocked with a lot of communities to the east and west of the airport, and, and some of the, and not so much by the communities affected by the diagonal runways. Some of the no votes were, of course, Elmhurst and Park Ridge. Des Plaines were a few that were affected by the diagonal runways. So that Test Three is scheduled to start immediately following Test Two, end of July. And it's a 12-week test, and we're going to have, be impacted every other week in that. So it is a concern. And I'd ask the residents to put on the survey. That's available on the ONCC website. We also put out a press release last week, I think, a few days ago, on that, to, to connect with that survey, to, to voice our displeasure with the current configuration of the runway rotation test. Thanks.
I would also add to what Alderman Dunn said. You can go to oherenoise.org, which is the ONCC website. And right on the landing page, on the front page, there's information on rotation, Fly Quiet Rotation Test Two, and also an article on Rotation Three. If you go to Test, if you click on the Fly Quiet Rotation, they actually have a map that shows you all the different rotations, and then they also show you individual weeks and what's affected. As Alderman Dunn said, for Fly Quiet Two, really, if you look at the, the rotation, about a third of what happens in Fly Quiet Two affects that diagonal runway and affects Elmhurst. Fly Quiet Three, every other week, it's about 50 percent. And Jimmy said we were going to be setting up press releases on the surveys every week.
Each week that it's going to be on our rotation, we'll be sending a reminder out to the resident.
Okay. Alderman Bram?
I just want to clarify that the rotation is, is only in the evening hours during the day the airport operates with utilizing all the runways available.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Just one, I wanted to say thank you to City Manager Grabowski and Alderman Dunn for making that motion and to speaking out on behalf of the Elmhurst residents in regards to not only these test pilots, but what is the potential down the road. I guess two questions, and Alderman Dunn, I don't know if these were asked, or if they were asked, if they were even answered. One being, you posed in, in your statements a little bit ago, that you made a motion to delay this vote of doing a test run three. Was there any rationale given on why they decided to move forward, and would there be any negative effects to delaying a vote until you actually get results from the test run two, which is what they did with test run two? They waited for test run one to evaluate that data?
Well, let's, why don't you ask, why don't you get both your comments out, and then we'll go to Alderman.
Okay. So one was that, was what was the rationale for not at least delaying the vote? And two, why did they make a decision two weeks into test run two, period? I mean, just logically, to me, it doesn't make sense when you don't have the data. How do you know there's a need for another run? So those are my two questions.
Alderman Dunn, you want to?
Yeah, yes, certainly.
Share a little bit about the conversation around your motion?
The, one of the statements that was made by the chair, that she mentioned that the feeling was time was of the essence, which I think it was a false sense of urgency that was being pushed. And what would happen is if the Test Three was delayed, it would go back to just the normal rotation at night, which doesn't impact Elmhurst that much. But there was a lot of representation on the ONCC by communities that, that wanted to move forward with Test Three, and they were not willing to wait. So we did not have the votes to, to delay that, unfortunately. I think that was the right answer in that case.
I think the other question was, what was the urgency behind three? I don't know if you answered at the same time. I think the answer for that, Alderman Bram, is that as we've discussed in the past, and as Alderman Dunn mentioned, there's quite a lot of support on one side of this argument at this meeting, and I think it's probably political. They had an opportunity to vote it through, and they took it. About right, Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, I was just looking for any insight if there was any data points given on the rationale behind the decision, and my take on it is not. You know, I was encouraged, at least for test run one, that they waited, and I assumed evaluated the data before they decided that something else is needed. You know, the, my perspective has always been, or my understanding has been on this, is that, you know, the reason why they want the east-west parallel runways is the most efficient and safest flight patterns for all involved. So a delay in running Test Number Three actually makes sense to me compared to doing more rotations quicker, because the east-west parallel runways, and Chicago Aviation has said in the past, is the most efficient and safest flight patterns we can do. Thanks.
Any other reports? All right, agenda item 10. This is an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'll ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of $6,770,000 general obligation refunding bond, Series 2017A of the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding general obligation bonds of said city, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issuance of said bonds and authorizing sale of said bonds to Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. What all Pat, Clerk Spencer just said was, basically, we refunded some debt today, or we refinanced some debt today. So what I'd like to do, though, is just make sure everybody recall seeing the press release that the city earned its, earned, retained its AAA bond rating for the fourth consecutive year earlier, late last month. And the news we're going to hear a little bit later on about this bond sale is, you know, certainly influenced by the excellent credit rating that the city enjoys at this point in time. So just hope everybody saw that. We're about 30, we're in about 30 of 310 municipalities that have a AAA rating through Standard and Poor's. So as Clerk Spencer mentioned, we sold, we refinanced some bonds today, just under $7 million worth of bonds. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules to allow the representatives from our bond, from our financial consultants who help place these bonds. Mr. Mark Jarantina, Jaratina is here today to address the council with all the details regarding that. Also, Kevin McKenna, who's principal with the firm, is also here. But I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules for...
We'll just entertain a motion for what you said. So a motion to allow them to address the council. And I need a second. Second, Alderman Sabatino. We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sir, you're welcome to address the council. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Mark Jaratina from Spear Financial. And this morning, we took bids for the city's general obligation refunding bond, Series 2017A. And this currently refunded the outstanding Series 2009 bonds. And we received six, 25 bids from six different bidders, and the winning bid ended up being Robert W. Baird at a 2.19 percent. And this resulted in nominal savings of about $900,000 over the life of the issue. And that equates to $785,000 on a net present value basis when you take into account the time value of money. And with that being said, we recommend that, that the bonds we awarded to Robert W. Baird at a 2.19 percent. And in the S and P report here, the, the AAA was supported by the city's strong economy, the strong management, the very strong budgetary performance, and the very strong liquidity. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So also included in the board docs is the report that we issued that this committee, it actually was a different committee issued in March. But you'll get it, you'll get a real sense for the economic impact of our bond rating and the bond market today. We were conservatively estimating that we would be able to refund to about a 3.5 percent interest rate, and you can see we far exceeded that. Now, financial advisors will tell you that results today are no indication of what could happen in the future and all that, all that kind of stuff. But it was a good day for Elmhurst. So we far exceeded it. We were estimating that we'd save about $479,000, was actually over $900,000. And did we get a premium, too, on the bond?
Yeah, it was about $378,000 premium.
Yeah, so we'll get a check for $378,000, too. So it was a good day.
Fantastic. Any questions? Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Alderman York, anything else you want to say about this motion?
Oh, thank you.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Ludo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Ordinance, agenda item 10.1 is approved. Before we move on to other business, I want to thank staff, past council, and Alderman York and his committee. You know, that AAA bond rating is something that I have an opportunity to speak about quite often. As Alderman York mentioned, about 10 percent of the municipalities in the state of Illinois have that. And, you know, often I'm asked, well, that's not really a big deal. They all sound the same. Double A, triple A, single A. I mean, it's all A. Isn't it great? Well, imagine if you added, you know, 50 basis points to that bond issue that we just did. I mean, we're literally talking, in this case, over $700,000 in real-time dollars, over $900,000 of the life of this reissue. I mean, it's just extraordinary. I mean, it's just extraordinary. The hard work that this council and staff put in on that budget, and how ultimately, really, quite frankly, are pretty fiscally conservative. And we have, we'll spend hours and hours beating, beating ourselves up, up here a lot of times, but the end result's worth it, to be able to pass along this kind of a savings to the residents of Elmhurst is truly incredible. And it's really not something that's the norm, quite frankly. Other, you don't see this at other communities. So congratulations to all who are involved. On to other business. Any other business? Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to take a moment to speak a little bit about the heroin addiction epidemic that, that we have here in DuPage County and even in Elmhurst. It was a sad weekend, this past weekend. We had memorial services for two young men that were 25 years old. Both graduated from York High School in 2010. Kevin Berg, who just graduated from Marquette, and Brendan Gallagher, who also graduated college, are, remain, stays in the community, very well-connected, strong families, and had, had the opportunity to attend one of the memorial services. And it's just not something that, that anyone likes to attend. And so it, it was, it was a tough weekend, and I think we, we just have to be steadfast as leaders in, in the community to really focus on prevention and supporting our youth commission in their efforts. Doing things like bringing Chris Herron in to speak to the, to the young kids on this, I think is very important. And I know the overdose rates increased in 2016 in DuPage County by 53 percent last year, and it's, it's certainly a big problem. And there is a lot of push to address it by our, by the DuPage Coroner, and many, many in the community, and I think we need to keep doing that. This, 10 years ago, there, there wasn't as, nearly as much of a problem as we have now. And, you know, I'd like to see five years or so from now to be back in that situation through, through our efforts to, to focus on prevention and, you know, and get everyone on board and, and behind that, that mission. Thanks.
Okay. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned. Thank you.